I know Sarah's on a bunch more. She's not saying anything.
Yeah. Well, and I know you guys did send Gabriel Cog.
Yeah, they're all, they're all a little unique and different, though.
We are now live and just waiting for Mayor Serta.
Becky?
Yes, Lisa?
I noticed Kevin did not join as a panelist. Um, so if he needs to speak, you're going to have to unmute him, I guess.
That's not a problem. He's already signed on as an attendee.
Yeah, I saw that. Kevin Kwak is, um, I don't know the exact title in Public Works because we don't have a Public Works Director right now, but if there were any questions onto the Public Works side, then I think he can answer them if you guys can't.
Kevin is our Principal Engineer.
Thank you.
Hello, Kevin. We have unmuted you, so you can unmute yourself anytime during the meeting to speak.
Hey, everyone.
Good evening.
Hello. Hi, Mayor.
Are we ready to begin?
Yes.
Okay, so we're ready to open the Gardena City Council's special study session for Tuesday, June 30th, 2020, at 6:30. Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Serta?
Here.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Here.
Councilmember Cascanian?
Present.
Councilmember Francis?
Here.
City Manager, uh, City Manager Osorio?
Present.
Assistant City Attorney Kranitz?
Acting Community Development Director Barrigan?
Present.
That concludes our roll, Madam City Clerk, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Let me just read this here before I turn it over to our City Manager. Um, in order to minimize the spread of COVID-19 virus, Governor Newsom has issued executive orders that temporarily suspends requirements of the Brown Act. Please be advised that council members are, the council chambers are closed to the public and that some or all of the Gardena City Council members may be attending this meeting telephonically or by Zoom. If you would like to participate in this meeting, you can participate via the following options. Number one, you can view the meeting live on Spectrum Channel 22 or online at youtube.com/cityofgardena. Um, or two, participate before the meeting by emailing the records management coordinator at k r h e e at cityofgardena.org by, um, 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting with the, um, public comment in the subject line. Comments will be read into the record up to the time limit of three minutes. The third way you can participate is via the Zoom webinar. So join the meeting via internet or via phone conference. The direct URL is HTTPS, semicolon, forward slash, forward slash, US02WEB.ZOOM.us forward slash J forward slash eight six seven zero seven nine one nine seven three. Also, our phone number is area code six six nine nine zero zero nine one two eight and the meeting ID number is eight six seven zero seven nine one nine seven two three. If you wish to speak, uh, we're not going to have agenda items, but you can raise your hand and, uh, at that time you can wait for the clerk to, um, address you. Um, so at this time, the City of Gardena thinks should advance for taking all the precautions to preventing, uh, the spreading of COVID-19 virus. Uh, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to our City Manager. And, uh, we'll go for it with the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Serta and members of the City Council and, um, to our residents, uh, community that's joining us this evening. Thank you for this time. Um, uh, we are currently, uh, holding a very important session, study session on the SB 743 Implementation Transportation Analysis Update. Uh, when evaluating projects, be it residential or, uh, commercial, uh, one of the things we typically look for are environmental impacts, specifically, um, uh, traffic impacts, uh, caused by the project. Uh, traditionally and as, uh, current practice, the city has used what is called a Level of Service or LOS analysis, uh, which, uh, basically measures the traffic delay caused by the project. Uh, the greater the delay, obviously, the greater the impact. Obviously, uh, the goal here is to keep, uh, traffic as minimal as possible and to have as little delay as possible to the public. In 2013, SB 743 was signed into law, which, uh, started a process to change the way, um, transportation impacts were analyzed under SEQA. So SB 743 changes the, the way impacts are determined from traffic delay using the LOS method uh, to vehicle miles traveled or BMT. And really, the goal is to encourage infill development, uh, which in turn reduces greenhouse gases or, uh, GHG and improves, uh, overall public health. As of July 1st, 2020, uh, all cities must use the revised BMT criteria to determine impacts for SEQA purposes. Uh, the proposed amendment to the circulation plan removes the reference to LOS and replaces it with BMT. Uh, new thresholds of significance uh, for transportation impacts based on BMT will be adopted as part of the city's, uh, updated SEQA policies and procedures. So on June 2nd, 2020, the Planning Commission unanimously voted 5-0 to recommend approval to the City Council, uh, to amend the circulation plan of the city's general plan, uh, adopting the revised SEQA guidelines, which incorporate the new thresholds for transportation impacts related to BMT and direct staff to file a notice of, uh, notice of exemption. This evening, we have our consultants for, uh, from Fair and Peers, which are the leading traffic engineers and experts in this field. Uh, we enlisted their help to provide, um, our city with the thresholds of significance based on, uh, BMT and the SEQA policies, uh, and procedures. Uh, we'll now be presenting the information tonight to provide the City Council, uh, with a foundation, uh, on the subject matter prior to the July 14th meeting. So I'm now turning it over to, uh, Fair and Peers.
Great. Thank you so much for that introduction. Go ahead and share my screen now. All right. So thank you all, councilmembers, for the opportunity to speak with you, uh, today on this topic. My name is Emily Finkel. I'm a transportation planner with Fair and Peers. I'll be starting off, um, the presentation with an overview of this project and will provide some background information on SB 743 and the vehicle miles traveled concept. And then I'll hand it off to my colleague Sarah Brandonberg, who will go over the specifics as they apply to Gardena. And I just wanted to mention that our colleague Tom Gahl is also on the line. Um, we are all available to answer questions and we want to make sure your questions get answered. So, um, we'll be taking breaks throughout the presentation, um, to ask for any questions and, and feel free to let me know, uh, or let Sarah know along the way as those questions come up. All right. So starting with an overview of the project. Um, the, the project is framed by SB 743. So, um, it was triggered with the adoption of this California Senate bill um, and the subsequent guidance that was developed by the state to shift how we do transportation analysis under the California Environmental Quality Act or SEQA to better align with state goals. So those goals include reducing greenhouse gas emissions, encouraging infill development, and improving public health through increased biking and walking. And the state legislation stated that, uh, new criteria for analyzing transportation impacts should promote development of multimodal transportation networks, promote a diversity of land uses, um, and, and ensure that environmental impacts of traffic like noise, air pollution, and safety, uh, can still be addressed and mitigated. So to address these goals and criteria, state guidance focuses on analyzing vehicle miles traveled, uh, which we also call VMT and you'll hear referred to as such in this presentation. So over the past several months, we've been working with city staff to help bring, uh, the city's processes for environmental review of projects in line with the new state requirements. And the work fell under three main categories, uh, with a focus on streamlining the process for the city and providing the tools and resources that city staff would need uh, to implement these changes going forward. So, so first is an update to the circulation plan of the general plan, uh, to bring that plan in line with SB 743 as well as another state law called the Complete Streets Act. The second step, uh, was to define the process by which the city will be analyzing vehicle miles traveled on projects going forward. And that's, that's the portion that's required under SEQA. And then the third step was, uh, of the process was to document, uh, a process for transportation assessment of proposed projects outside of what's required under SEQA. And so this, this piece is to ensure that you all and city staff uh, still have the information that, that you need to make decisions about potential changes uh, to the roadway network, uh, outside of information from, uh, a vehicle miles traveled or VMT analysis. So we'll, we'll be getting into the details about SB 743 and vehicle miles traveled over the next several slides, but I just wanted to pause here and ask if there are any questions about the structure, the process of the project. All right. I'll go on, uh, to the next section here. So, uh, the next section is providing an overview of SB 743 and then digging a little bit deeper into the details of that legislation. So SB 743 was signed into law in 2013. Uh, in 2018, the state agencies responsible for SEQA issued updated guidelines uh, to reflect the changes that stemmed from 743. And a deadline was put into place to have, uh, lead agencies, local jurisdictions, adopt their new processes for analyzing VMT by July 2020, which is, which is where we are now. So how does this method for analyzing transportation impacts differ from the method that we were using previously? Um, the, the transportation impacts, um, for development that, that we were previously measuring used a concept called Level of Service or LOS. And this method, um, which was defined on an A through F scale, um, provides information about the level, the level of vehicle traffic in comparison to the available roadway capacity. And it was often described in terms of the delay that's experienced by drivers. And so the two photos here show what the difference might look like between a location performing well under that LOS system, um, with a grade letter A versus one, um, with a grade letter F.
Emily, this is Mayor Protem Henderson, but nowhere in the calculation does it talk about the time of day, though, right?
So, um, under the LOS system, generally, we would be analyzing, uh, conditions under the AM peak period in the morning, uh, rush hour time, and then the PM peak period, um, in the afternoon rush hour.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so, so these two, getting back to the two photos, um, the, the, one of the points here is that operating under LOSA um, does not necessarily mean that we're meeting other priorities or goals. Um, so while changes to driving conditions that increase travel time are definitely an important consideration, um, and something that the, the city will continue to use um, for traffic operations and management, these changes don't fully describe environmental effects associated with fuel consumption, emissions, uh, or public health. All right. So, um, just to get a little bit deeper into, uh, the methodology changes that come from 743. So for the purposes of SEQA, um, the change from SB 743 eliminates LOS as a metric for transportation analysis and replaces it with VMT. So this also changes what is considered an impact under SEQA and it changes what types of mitigations we might focus on, um, to mitigate those impacts. So on we, as we saw on the last slide, the LOS methodology often focused on increasing roadway capacity, which ran counter to state environmental goals uh, and processes that were set up by the legislation, um, like AB 32 and SB 375, um, which set emissions targets for the state um, or set, set up the process for, um, regions to set their emissions targets as well. So by measuring VMT instead, uh, we are able to better analyze the amount of driving and emissions related to a proposed development. So we're basically shifting from measuring the impact to drivers to measuring the impact of driving. Uh, and I had mentioned this previously, but before we move on from this slide, I just wanted to, to make the point again. So LOS can still be used for local information purposes. It just can't be used for the purposes of identifying an impact under SEQA. Any questions about LOS or that methodology before we move on to, uh, talking a little bit more about VMT? Okay. So, uh, I'm going to play a short video uh, that I think will be a helpful explainer about what VMT is and how it's calculated.
What is VMT? VMT, or Vehicle Miles Traveled, refers to the distance that a car travels regardless of how many passengers are in the car. So this car, traveling one mile, would generate one VMT. And four vehicles, traveling 10 miles, would generate 40 VMT. To understand how much VMT a person generates on a typical weekday, it's useful to map their travel throughout the day. In this example, Jess starts the day at home, drives to the coffee shop two miles away, and then heads to work, which is 10 miles from the coffee shop. After a day at the office, Jess returns home 11 miles away. Later, Jess heads out and drives one mile to the gas station to fill up before driving another three miles to the grocery store, and then makes the two-mile trip back home. By adding together the miles driven, it is shown that Jess has generated 29 VMT for the entire day. This VMT can be further categorized into the individual trip purposes that motivated each leg of the trip. VMT can be organized into three typical trip purposes: home-to-work, or HW; home-to-other, or HO; and other-to-other, or OO. This organization is helpful in understanding that trips to and from work tend to generate the most VMT because people are willing to drive longer distances as the benefit of the trip increases. Do you have other questions about VMT that you would like answered? Let us know.
All right. So that's the, the short little explainer there on, on VMT. Um, there's a couple specific trip types, um, that are important to, um, VMT analysis that I just wanted to mention. So there are the ones shown here. The first is home-based VMT. So this encompasses all trips to or from home. Uh, and the second is home-based work VMT encompassing all trips, um, between home and work. So a bit later in the presentation, Sarah will describe how these types uh, of VMT are used in the guidelines developed for Gardena. Um, and I just wanted, before I hand it off to her, check and see are there any further questions on 743 or VMT? All right. Hearing none, I will hand it off to you, Sarah, for the next piece of the presentation.
Great. Good evening, everyone. Pleasure to be with you. I'm Sarah Brandonberg. Um, I'm going to shift the conversation now to focusing on what we're doing for the city of Gardena to really help you through this process and give you a sense of what we'll be studying with projects going forward. So the first part that we'll talk about are the changes to the circulation plan updates. If you want to move to the next slide, Emily?
Yes.
So what we're doing with the, the circulation, uh, plan updates is it's really a, a light refresh to the goals and policies that are in your circulation element. Um, so looking at those policies related to sustainability, greenhouse gas emissions, um, infill development opportunities, and adding those, making sure those are highlighted in the circulation element, and removing any references to Level of Service. The benefit of doing this is that as you're reviewing projects for consistency with your general plan, you'll have this fresh set of goals and policies that are also in line with what the state is asking you to do when it comes to looking at environmental impacts. And so really, the main purpose of this was just making sure no inconsistencies were left with this change in legislation. In terms of overall what's in your general plan, where nothing is changing in terms of the types of development that are allowed, right? No zoning changes are resulting from this. No actual changes to your transportation infrastructure um, and what the city wants to be doing going forward with your transportation infrastructure or development are, are occurring. And what's changing is just really the way we need to analyze projects coming through your city. Um, we also added a policy in the circulation element related to complete streets. And the idea there is that as you're thinking about projects or transportation improvements, you're really thinking about all the different users that are accessing your streets. So whether it's somebody driving, somebody riding a bike, somebody walking down the street, somebody taking your transit system, um, that we're just considering all of the different modes of travel, um, in the city as projects are proceeding. So again, not changing projects in and of themselves, just, you know, taking another look at the goals and policies to support that, those projects.
I have a question, Sarah. This is, uh, Mayor Protem Henderson. So in that Complete Streets Act, and as we think about development of projects, sometimes some of those various modalities, there could be a conflict, right? But, uh, so how do we respond with that? So for instance, if we got a heavy car-laden space, but folks want to use bikes, but it's just not safe, is that then being an incomplete street act? Or how will we look at that?
Yeah, no, it's a really good question. And, you know, when we're working in a constrained environment or a built-out environment, like the city of Gardena, where there's really no room left to widen roads, we're constantly dealing with these trade-offs and travel choices. So if you're redesigning a road and you realize it's, it might not be a, a road that's appropriate to put a bike lane on, right? It could be a higher-speed four- or six-lane road and you want to prioritize your bike travel on another street. So complete streets doesn't mean that you accommodate every single mode on every single street in your city. It simply means that as you're going through the design process, you think, what can we do? So there may be something even with, um, the way you're striping crosswalks on a busy street, right? Have really high-visibility crossings, um, to accommodate pedestrians that are there or to accommodate somebody, you know, walking their bike across the street as well, or EDA access. So yeah, it's a, it's a really good question, but it doesn't, there's no requirement that you need to accommodate every mode on every street. It's just something to consider.
Okay, thank you.
So now we'll move on to talk more about, uh, the VMT analysis that we'll be looking at on projects going forward. And we'll do this by, um, in really two parts that go into these VMT studies. The first is determining when do we even need to do a VMT study for a project in the city. And so we've been working with city staff to look at various screening criteria. And if a project meets one of these criteria, then we can kind of simply check a box. We don't need to go, go ahead and do a more detailed analysis. And then for projects that do require analysis, what constitutes an impact? So when it comes to disclosing impacts, um, of, to the environment under the SEQA process, we wanted to make sure that the impact criteria that the city was using on VMT was clear going forward. So getting a little bit more into the detail on the project screening criteria, the first option we have, um, when we're looking at if a VMT analysis is needed is we look at the type of project and the size of the project. So smaller projects don't require a VMT analysis. And we define a small project as one that generates 110 daily trips or less. So that could be a, a single-family home project that has about 10 units, for example. If you're looking at multifamily development in the city, a, a project that has between 15 and 20 units, um, wouldn't require a VMT analysis. And for other land use types, the city can take a look at just kind of typical trip generation and is the project big enough to, to warrant the need for a VMT analysis? Um, we also are able to look for commercial projects, at the amount of retail that's being proposed as part of a site development. And so if we're having a project that has locally-serving retail and that's defined as retail that's less than 50,000 square feet, then we don't need to look at a more, a more thorough VMT analysis there. And the idea with locally-serving retail is that if we're providing more opportunities for people to shop close to where they work and close to where they live, we should actually be able to reduce the cumulative amount of VMT in the area and reduce that, that length somebody's driving to reach the common goods and services in the city. And then the third option for, um, in terms of this screening criteria is around affordable housing projects. So if a project has all affordable housing units or if there are affordable housing units within a larger development site, those affordable housing units do not need to consider their, um, VMT impact. And again, it's providing housing opportunities close to where people can work and, and access common goods. And so we don't need to proceed further down VMT analysis.
Sarah, I have a question. This is Councilman Tanaka.
Sure.
Okay. So, you know, you start talking about these projects and then you're talking about trips less than 110, uh, and retail. So how do, how does it? Okay. So how do you determine how many trips are being made? How, how is that, uh, computed? I don't understand that.
Yeah. So, so we have some guidance and the city has these documents as well that you can use for reference. The Institute of Transportation Engineers publishes, uh, what they call a trip generation manual of common land use types. And you can use the, the trip generation rates in that manual to get an estimate of how many trips a project would generate. So it has, for example, office buildings, shopping centers, residential uses, industrial-related uses. And so in terms of determining, does something generate 110 trips? That's a, a quick calculation the city can do, you know, less than an hour time commitment, right? Usually, it's just a few minutes to look at that common trip generation rate that is used.
So it's a best estimate according to the manual?
It's an average, exactly. And so if you think you have something really unique going into, to the city where we don't feel comfortable or confident pulling that average rate out of a manual, um, then we just wouldn't want to rely on this kind of check-the-box exercise, right? This is really more for those straightforward land use projects where you have confidence in the data you have available and confidence that they will, you know, on average, generate that less than 110 daily trips.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Brandonberg, I have a question. This is Councilman Cascanian.
Great.
Uh, as far as the VMT, uh, on the local serving retail, 50,000, less than 50,000 square feet is not required, right?
Correct.
Uh, is that for the gross property, the whole, let's say, the whole, the, the land? Or the building it's on is 50,000 square feet?
It would be the, the amount of new development going on a site. So if it was a shopping center, it could, if it was, let's say it's a- So if it was a shopping center, it could, if it was, let's say it's a shopping center, and it has two thirty thousand square foot buildings and a, you know, ten thousand square foot restaurant collectively? Yeah, so collectively, that's above fifty thousand square feet, and we would need to do a V M T study for that. If it was lots of small buildings, and cumulatively, they were less than fifty thousand square feet, then we would not need to do a more thorough V M T analysis.
I see. But is it optional that we can request to do V M T if it's less than fifty thousand too as well, or?
Yeah, again, I think if you have something that's unique, where you're concerned that it's not only serving local uses, right? Again, a unique retail use that maybe is just under that fifty thousand square foot threshold that, you know, your city staff is looking at, or your city attorneys are looking at and saying, you know what? This is, you know, people from around the South Bay area are going to come to this site because it's kind of one of a kind. Then we wouldn't want to treat that as just being screened. We may want to do a more detailed V M T study. Yeah, so this is kind of on on average, right? It's a small, it could be like a pharmacy going in, a fast food restaurant, a smaller grocery store. That would not require further V M T analysis.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
I have a quick question on the trips. So is that, let's say, for instance, the one hundred and ten trips, is that generated by the new occupants of the project? For instance, if it's a multifamily dwelling, you'd get the, you'd get the trips generated by those folks that are going to live there, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so we can talk about the other options we have for screening projects. So the second option we have is we look at the the current V M T characteristics in the city. And, you know, Emily was describing how we calculate V M T and the types of trips we're looking at. What the state is asking us to do is they know if new development is coming, that it's going to create new vehicle travel, right? But what they're wanting to see is, are we putting that new development in a V M T-efficient location? So if we put this housing development in the city of Gardena, for example, will it generate less V M T than it would somewhere else in the broader region? So we can measure that using a regional model that's provided by the Southern California Association of Governments. They create this model and update it about every four years as they're updating their regional transportation plan and sustainable community strategies plan. And that model contains the entire SCAG region, right? So for example, it contains all of L A County. And what we can do, and what we have done as part of this process, is look at the V M T data in the city of Gardena compared to the broader SCAG region. And we're able to map where those V M T-efficient locations are. And so, for example, for residential uses in the city, the figure that's shown on the screen is that everything in that light shaded blue color on that map for your city is an area that's already defined by the state as being a V M T-efficient zone, meaning that the V M T that's generated in this area on a per-person basis is at least fifteen percent below the broader regional average. And so if we have a residential project coming into these blue zones, then we do not need to do any further V M T analysis. We can use this map and the data from the model to show this is a good V M T-efficient location. The state is wanting us to put development in these V M T-efficient locations, explain that process, but we don't need to go further and do a V M T analysis. So what we found when we did the V M T mapping for Gardena is that for residential projects, you do have very efficient V M T in comparison to the broader region. So you're already kind of on average for a city well below that fifteen percent threshold that's being defined by the state. And also, on the employment side, you're also performing better than average for the region. So a new office building coming into the city, for example, on average, would perform better than the broader SCAG region. And so again, based on these maps, it's another opportunity to not need to do a more thorough V M T analysis.
Excuse me, I have a question. Is our low V M T area, is that because of our public transportation system?
The transit helps, yes. And the number, I think the the mix of uses you have in the city and kind of proximity to other jobs in the region. So we look at, for the people that live in Gardena, what are their kind of common commute trips? What are their trips for kind of shopping, schools, daily errands? And you have, you know, you have a lot of good mixed uses in the city, and then there's just a lot around the city that you have access to as well. So you consider, for example, somebody living kind of further out in L A County, their commute trip is probably going to be longer, they may not have as many retail uses close by that they can easily access, and so on average, their V M T is higher.
Thank you.
And your question's a perfect segue into our third option we have for V M T screening, which is project proximity, land use proximity to high-quality transit. And so the state is saying that if we put new development within a half mile of where we have a good, robust transit network, then we also don't need to consider V M T for those projects. And what we define as high-quality transit is either a bus stop or a train station that has at least fifteen-minute service during the peak commute hours. So you go to that stop, and every fifteen minutes, based on that, you know, bus schedule, you're going to be able to get access to a bus. And so what we're showing in the figure here with this orange shading for the city, everything within one of those orange circles or orange areas of the city is within a one-half-mile distance of that transit service. There are a couple of density checks and kind of planning checks we do to make sure a project meets the intent of being kind of transit-friendly, right? We want to make sure, for example, if you had a warehouse building going in next to a bus stop, we can't just say that's a, you know, a transit-oriented development, and we're going to not need to do V M T because it's close to the bus stop, right? It doesn't really meet the intent of needing transit. So what we do for these areas is we want to make sure that there's kind of a reasonable amount of density being put in place. So for example, multifamily housing would qualify as being high-quality transit accessible, that we aren't over-parking the projects, right? So you can put in parking that meets your city code, but we don't want to see a lot more parking than is required by city code because, again, we want to be encouraging people to take transit, so we don't want to provide, you know, over-park the area. We want to make sure the project's generally consistent with the regional transportation plan, the regional SCAG, R T P S C S. And then we also want to make sure that the project is not replacing affordable housing with a smaller number of kind of at-market-rate housing units. So again, a couple of checks we do in addition to this mapping exercise to make sure that projects can meet the screening criteria.
Sarah, before you move on, I just want to point out that in Gardena, the, most of the commercial projects will not qualify for this regardless of them being in the orange area, because you need to have a floor-area ratio that is point seven-five or greater. Gardena's commercial development is limited in our general plan and in our municipal code to a point five F A R, meaning we don't create very-dense projects. And the state's saying that doesn't create the type of high-quality transit project that they want to see exempt. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so once we've gone through that screening process, if a project does require a more thorough V M T analysis, we do have that SCAG modeling tool that I mentioned earlier that a project applicant can use to show you the V M T data for its project site and how it compares to the regional average. And in that analysis, what we're looking for again is we would like to be able to show that that project is at least fifteen percent below the regional average, or that they can do something through project design or mitigation strategies to achieve that fifteen percent reduction in comparison to the regional average. And what we've been talking about here tonight, a lot of it has been related to land use development. We also need to consider V M T for transportation projects. However, we were talking earlier about complete streets and, you know, ability to widen roads, and given that Gardena is very constrained and pretty much your roadway system is built out, and you don't have, you know, many roadway widening projects planned, if any, like just because of your your development scale, it's very unlikely that you'll ever see a V M T impact when it comes to a transportation project, right? So if you're doing something that's just restriping your streets, putting in a new traffic signal, putting in a new pedestrian crosswalk, any of those kind of more spot improvements or improvements just to make your your streets flow smoother, you shouldn't have any concerns or be facing a V M T impact going forward on those projects. So the third part of what we've done through this process is look at what else you would like to see besides V M T when it comes to transportation review for your projects. So we're reframing these as local transportation assessments. And what the local transportation assessment will do is that for every project coming in, we will look at the trip generation of that project. It's something that we do today for land use developments in the city and is an important part of the step, whether we're looking at, does it meet the screening for V M T? And good questions on that earlier. Or how many trips does this project generate? And how much of the surrounding intersections and roadway network should we study as part of this local transportation assessment? It was really interesting when we met with your Planning Commission about a month ago, earlier in June, a couple of the agenda items before us, we're looking at land use development project review in the city. And a lot of the discussion was about, you know, how will cars access this site? Where is the driveway located? Do we need a new signal at the driveway? How many parked cars do we anticipate? Do we have enough parking today on that site to support the the use that's being proposed? And so all of those types of questions, we want to make sure still get answered as part of these local transportation assessments, so that Planning Commission and U S City Council have a good understanding of how these projects will access your street system, and are there any improvements needed? So this will still be part of the process, and staff will be working with project applicants to really help them identify the intersections close by or roadways close by that they should be considering. And so the couple of steps we go through are, again, looking at the number of trips a project will generate. Are there any developments in the area nearby that we should consider in terms of their cumulative project trip generation? And then when we are doing the full transportation assessment, we will look at the level of service and operations of your roadway system as it is today, how they will operate with the proposed project in place in the future, how it will operate cumulatively with all of the development planned in the area, and see if any improvements are needed. So this is all a really important part of the planning process going forward. One of the benefits of the changes with the state legislation under S B seven forty-three is that this analysis that we're doing here for the local review no longer is considered an environmental impact. And so what that does is it really allows the city to customize what you want to see. You're not going to be holden to something that's in the CEQA guidelines manual that you have to do and we have to do for V M T. We have to meet that state requirement here. It can really be customized to what you want to see in the city on a project-by-project basis. And what we've done here is provide some general guidance for project applicants going forward.
I have a question. So what we're saying with this is, as opposed to looking at an individual project and for its V M T and all that, you have to look at the individual project, how it impacts existing projects or future projects or could, is that what we're doing?
So we, we're looking at how the project impacts the local roadway network. So my, when I was saying that we want to look at other projects nearby, it's not so much how the project being proposed will affect something down the street, but how the project being proposed plus the project down the street will add traffic to a particular intersection, for example, right? So we want to make sure when we're planning the city's roadway network that we know a project is being proposed, what additional traffic will that project add to a particular location in the city? But if there's also something down the street that's adding traffic, they've already done their study. We just want to make sure we're accounting for that, too, because maybe collectively, we would need to put in a new traffic signal, for example, or make sure, you know, we are putting in a better right-turn lane, for example.
Okay.
I have a question. Councilman Tanaka, I have a question.
Go ahead.
So we border other cities. So we border Torrance, we border the Harbor Gateway, and we border part of the county. So what happens when they have a project or we have a project? Do the two different entities get together and talk about projects so that we can deal with the traffic signals, the intersections, and the crosswalks and those kind of issues? Or is it just us doing our own?
So the, I mean, good planning would be that you do come together and talk about it, right? There's no requirement under CEQA that you do that, but I don't know if city staff wants to talk about how you do that now or how you anticipate continuing to do that. But again, there's no requirement in the state legislation that asks you to do that. But I hope with good planning that it occurs. Lisa, you want?
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yes.
In CEQA, first off, if the projects within, I think, impacts our traffic systems, then we are required to get notice under CEQA from the adjoining jurisdictions. You actually get notice from as far away as El Segundo on projects that, just because they could have a long-term spillover effect. So generally, cities do notify each other, certainly with, if it was like the Prologis project, which is considering, and we are directly within five hundred feet, there's notification requirements. And when those signals or the traffic improvements cross the border of the city, they have to work together. Like El Segundo recently approved something on Rose Crowns, but the other half of the intersection was in Manhattan Beach. So Manhattan Beach will also have to approve that type of improvement, and they got notice of what the city was doing. So there is cooperation.
Okay, thank you.
Sarah, I have a quick question as well, and this kind of piggybacks off of Councilmember Tanaka's. So let's just say, as he mentioned before, we border other cities, and if we have something in the works and another city does, whoever gets there's in first, does that supersede? Or, you know, if we know something's coming down the road? And let me give an example. To our west, one of our neighboring cities built a, I think it's like an eight-story residential project, I think it's like two buildings like that. And I know that that has impacted our city there. But if we were to do something first before they did, would our supersede, even though we have to get permission, I mean, you know, we have to work with them?
No, it kind of depends how you look at it. So when we're looking at the new rules under S B seven forty-three when it comes to vehicle miles of travel, right? Each project is compared cumulatively to the region. And so, you know, one new multifamily project a couple blocks away doesn't really change a regional baseline we're working with, right? So in some ways, the new legislation projects are on a more even playing field by, you know, looking at themselves and looking at the broader region. If you're considering kind of the first-in approach when it comes to widening an intersection, or like you're saying, we know it's adding traffic, and we want to put multifamily, or you know, we want to put a project close to that intersection, and we feel like they're taking up all of our capacity because they're already built and they got there first, that is, I mean, that's something that has always been somewhat of a challenge. And this process doesn't really change in terms of the CEQA review. Again, it's kind of that being, being a good neighbor and hoping that we're able to coordinate and really identify the improvements that are needed through the planning phase, knowing what's in that are needed through the planning phase, knowing what's in the pipeline.
Well, Tom here, the one thing it does change is that the kind of improvements that you may come up with like that, whether they're related to your, your own driveway or the intersection right down the street, and if there's another project across the street in the other city, that all of that conversation you might have with them about these improvements you might need are no longer SEQA, right? That, that's what has changed. These would not be, the conversation with them would not be because you found a significant SEQA impact at intersections. It would just be because you want to be good neighbors and, and work with your neighbor.
Councilmember Kaskin, I have a question. I want to piggyback Councilman Tanaka and the mayors. The mayor mentioned about the project. What will happen? I mean, we're getting the overspill of their traffic and, you know, the parking issue. What will happen in that case and what should we do? Don't they have supposed to maybe, you know, put us in the loop too? So we can do something about it? Or because we do have complaints about these issues right now? Currently, we do. What will happen in that case?
Yeah, I think when it, when it comes to individual project review, I, I think what you're, you're encountering is just you're, you're kind of sort of, like I was saying, from a VMT lens, you have a lot of benefits from being surrounded by a lot of other cities, right? And a lot of land uses or different types of uses that people can be accessing. When that comes to how people are using the city's streets, the amount of people, the amount they're driving on Gardena streets without ever really stopping there. They don't live, maybe they don't live there, they don't work there, they're not shopping there. They're just avoiding, maybe they're avoiding traffic on the freeway. Maybe they're avoiding traffic on another major arterial and they're cutting through your city. That, you know, that, that's a challenge. And, you know, honestly, nothing that's going to change through this process that we're dealing with tonight. I definitely understand the concerns. But it's more of a, you know, more something that I would recommend dealing with as part of a maybe more thorough circulation element update, for example, or more of a broader planning, planning update. But it's definitely, I, I appreciate that it's definitely a challenge.
Yeah, because, I mean, you know, my point is, I understand, but do they will take under consideration while they're doing all these studies?
They should, but there, there's no requirement that they have to. But if there's a big development that's proposed, you know, just on the other side of your city limit, then they should be considering the amount of driving that's occurring on your streets, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I can, we, we, we would hope, but I, I can think of two projects right now that have, we have been impacted by. And with a neighboring city, one, there's a 250-something apartment unit that's going up. And there's this, we are going to be impacted by the traffic. There's a, there's a warehouse. And, you know, with all the traffic that's on our streets, we're, we're being impacted by it, so. And so they didn't, they didn't, they thought about what was best for their city. So there we are. It was more of a comment, just some, you know, when you're talking about impact and, and full transportation assessment, there's a couple of projects that I thought about. Okay, I think we can continue moving forward.
Emily, I believe this is our last slide. Oh, perfect. So yeah, so the next steps are, this was intended to be an overview for you before it comes back for an official adoption. So the next steps are to adopt the VMT thresholds that we talked about tonight. And then going forward, use these new guidelines to assess proposed projects. And over time, we can help update the maps or provide the city with the data they need to update those maps to really help with screening projects. So kind of dusting off those low VMT areas or updating your transit maps over time. That will occur about every four years.
So mayor and council members, we have this scheduled, I believe, for the July 14th city council meeting for the council to, one, amend the, the circulation plan of the city's general plan that Sarah spoke about earlier in her presentation to, to make the changes consistent with state law. And we will also be adopting these new thresholds as SEQA guidelines as part of just an overall update of the city, excuse me, the city's SEQA procedures. The general plan amendment required public hearing, public notice. So we waited until, let me back that up. Anytime you amend your general plan, even if it's something like this, which does not have a shovel-on-the-ground project, we are required to give tribal notification to those tribes in the California area that have requested it. That is a 90-day review process. That period of time ended about four days ago. So now that the 90 days has gone forward and they didn't ask to consult on this project, we can now move forward and the council can actually do the formal adoption on July 14th. So it will be coming to you as part of the regular council meeting. And Fair and Peers will be available at the July 14th council meeting as well. There'll be a shortened version of the presentation since it's a public hearing and available to answer any questions.
I have another question just out of curiosity, and I'm not sure who can answer it. So like everybody stated, we have a, a neighboring community that's building a major multifamily dwelling. And then we'll probably be up next afterwards. But these are going to be considered transit-oriented developments because they go up to the green line or close to the green line. Is there some sort of, I'm just curious, is there some sort of regional credit or something that we can get to reduce our RENA, to reduce our RENA numbers?
It doesn't give you a reduction in RENA numbers. It just exempts them out of doing the VMT analysis. And actually, I believe Fair and Peers ran about four or five pilot projects when we started this, which are set forth in that document that we sent out last week of the transportation analysis update. And I think it's the Gilad project you're talking about, Mayor Protem Henderson. And that one is, is out of a VMT analysis because of its location. But no, unfortunately, I think, you know, based on what SCAG did to us, the better our transportation was, the more housing units we got. So because we were a high-quality transportation area, they, they dumped them on us, they dumped them on Hawthorne and other similarly situated cities.
That's why we get all the love. I understand it. I understand it.
Good try, Mark. Good try.
Okay, is that the end of the presentation?
It is, yes.
Okay. Are there any more questions with council members? And do we have anybody from the public, Madam City Clerk, that wishes to ask any questions? Can't hear you, sorry.
Yes, give me one moment to check.
Sure.
No, I do not see any hands up, so we do not have any speakers.
Okay. Okay, so last call, council members, if you have any more questions?
No, of course, I have a comment. I'm saying that I appreciate city staff for setting up this, this study session. This was good. I was reading through everything, but the pictures and everything were great and it further solidified my understanding of it. So I was real appreciative and this was time well spent.
Yeah, thanks, Mark. I agree. Even after reading that document I got, I had to read it twice. I still didn't kind of get it, but today I appreciate that you actually came forward and kind of put it in perspective, so I kind of, I get it now.
Okay, well, again, once again, thank you.
My end too, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much on my end too. I mean, I liked the presentation. It's the better, you can, understanding if you see it and it explains to you. So even though I did read it as the council members, they said, you know, we went over it, but the presentation, it's, you know, self-explanatory, so it's pretty good. I like it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you guys for making those comments and to our consultant, Fear, Fears and Pers? And Peers?
And Peers.
Thank you guys as well for, like I said, doing a great presentation as well. So with that, if there are no more questions or comments, we're going to go ahead and end our study session and go to adjournment. So this meeting will be adjourned to our next closed session portion of our city council meeting, which will be at 7:00 PM. And then followed by a regular city council meeting, which will be at 7:30 PM on Tuesday, July 14th, 2020. See you guys all then.
Happy 4th of July.
Happy 4th of July, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody. Be safe.
Good night, be safe.
Hey, Mark, stop lighting those firecrackers.
He left.